The WebEx is now live.
Network 21 Virtual Board Meeting of the Cumberland County Board of Education is called to order. Mr. West will give our opening remarks and...
Thank you, Ms. Chisholm, very much.
Before I give any opening remarks, Pete, would you have any information regarding the flow of our meeting?
Thank you, Mr. West. We just ask that everyone keep their microphones muted until it's your opportunity to speak. That way, we can hopefully hear each other a little bit better this morning. We're not talking over one another. And welcome, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Pete. On behalf of Ms. Chisholm, I'd like to call this meeting to order. And Ms. Chisholm gave me the honor of extending a welcome this morning. We hope everyone had enjoyed their holidays and Happy New Year. 2020 is behind us and 2021 is already...
Looking brighter as vaccinations have begun in Cumberland County. Wanted to send a reminder out to everyone listening and who will watch this to remember the three W's. Wear a mask, wait six feet, and wash your hands often. And most of all, please register and prepare to get vaccinated. I've already done that. So we look forward to a smooth and informative meeting. And Pete, if you would, please take a roll of the members present.
Yes, sir. Ms. Chisholm?
Present.
Mr. West?
Present.
Ms. Jones?
Present.
Mr. McKeller?
Present.
Ms. Musgrave?
Present.
Sutton? Sutton, did I hear you?
Present, yes, I'm here.
Thank you, thank you. Ms. Van?
Present.
Orville?
Present.
And Ms. Williams?
Present.
Okay, Ms. Chisholm, Mr. West, that's everybody.
Thank you very much. The Chair will move now to 1.02 to adopt a virtual meeting format. Chair will call for a motion and a vote.
Ms. Chisholm, I'll make the motion up.
...to Board Policy Code 2300 and 2450 effective for this meeting only to waive the requirements that board members participate in the meeting in person and to clarify and formally adopt the virtual meeting format described in the meeting notice.
Second, has been approved in properly second that we accept 1.02. Pete, we use to record the vote.
Ms. Chisholm?
Yes.
Mr. West?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. McKeller?
Yes.
Ms. Musgrave?
Yes.
Ms. Sutton?
Yes.
Ms. Van?
Yes.
Mr. Orville?
Yes.
And Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Okay, thank you all. Ms. Chisholm, that was unanimous.
Thank you, Pete. The Chair will now call on Betty Musserwhite for recognitions. Is Ms. Musserwhite on?
I am on and my screen says that the camera is being used by another application. So I cannot open my video, but good morning. We begin our recognitions today by acknowledging Ms. Rebecca Christie from Stedman Elementary School. This fourth grade teacher was recently announced a North Carolina finalist for the Presidential Award for Excellence in Mathematics and Science Teaching. This is the second time Ms. Christie has been named a finalist in the last two years. She will be recognized at the state level for the instructional and reflective practices that set her apart from other teachers of mathematics across the state. And the Presidential Award for Excellence in Mathematics and Science Teaching is the highest recognition that a kindergarten through 12th grade science, technology, engineering, mathematics, and/or computer science teacher may receive for outstanding teaching in the United States. The winner will be announced this summer. We congratulate Ms. Christie on being a finalist for this distinguished award. We wish her the very best, certainly rooting for her to be the winner this summer, but proud of her at this point. At this time, Ms. Christie, feel free to unmute your microphone and share with us any thoughts you may have. And open your camera, please, if you can.
I just wanted to say thank you very much. I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Christie. We are so proud of you. And thank you for representing Cumberland County and the state of North Carolina for this recognition. Our next recognition this morning, we want to acknowledge the heroic efforts of some educators from Pinecrest High School who on November the 18th helped save the life of one of our students during a cross-country meet on their campus. We would like to recognize Pinecrest High's athletic trainer, Mr. Frank Sanchez, assistant trainer, Ms. Morgan Kraut, and wrestling coach, Mr. Bob Curtinglong, with others in the school's athletics department. John Bookchalls, Ms. Tammy Devine, and Mike Devine. Apparently, during the cross-country meet, Jack Britt Jr., Juliet Sue, was about 10 feet from the finish line when she collapsed. Ms. Kraut ran to assist Juliet and noticed she had no pulse. Immediately, she began performing sternum rubs with hopes of restarting Juliet's heart. Mr. Sanchez and Mr. Carton assisted by performing CPR and using an AED. For 15 minutes, the three performed CPR until the ambulance arrived. During that time, Juliet's heart never restarted and she was rushed to Moore County Regional Hospital and transported by helicopter to the UNC Medical Center in Chapel Hill. I'm told that about 10 hours after Juliet was cracking jokes in the hospital and eight days later, she was released from the hospital after receiving a defibrillator. Cumberland County Schools Athletic Director Vernon Aldrich shared with us that doctors have not been able to determine the cause, but the one thing they can all agree on is if Juliet had not been given CPR, she would not be with us today. The quick action of Ms. Kraut, Mr. Sanchez, and Mr. Carton are why we are able to share the story of a miracle that happened to Juliet Sue on November the 18th at Pinecrest High School. And we also want to applaud Mr. Bookchalls, Mike Devine, and Tammy Devine for their efforts with organizing, planning, and helping to execute the emergency action plan that assured Juliet received such great care. In fact, it was this plan put to practice that saved Juliet's life. We want to truly thank all six of you for your heroic efforts that day. Words cannot fully express the gratitude that we extend to you for stepping in, taking action, and literally saving the life of one of our students. We thank you so very much. Please unmute your microphone. Make sure your camera is on so we can recognize you. Cumberland County, thanks you very much. We appreciate your efforts on that day in November to save our student Juliet. Ladies and gentlemen, this concludes the recognition portion of our board meeting.
Thank you very much, Ms. Musserwhite. We move now to the superintendent's remarks. Dr. Conley?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning, board members, staff, and community. I trust that everyone has a safe holiday break. We will finish our holiday quarantine and isolation period this week. And I will say more about that later in my comments. Today, my comments are in two parts. First of all, the CCAPAP is with us to share some comments to the board members for National Board of Education members appreciation month. Please welcome Principal Monica Horry, the President of CCAPAP. Ms. Horry?
Good morning, everyone, and thank you for that, Dr. Conley. On behalf of the Cumberland County Association of Principals and Assistant Principals, we want to thank our Board of Education for their continued support of our schools and employees. We all understand the importance of your position and it has become more evident to all of us this past year how important and hard your job is. So we really appreciate that. We hope you enjoy the tokens of appreciation that you received and know that we are praying for your health, discernment, and unity. And thank you all again.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Horry. We truly have nine dedicated board members who have a passion and commitment to student success. And we all appreciate their dedication. Thank you, board members. At this time, I would like to give an update on where we are with managing the impact of COVID-19 on CCS. Kevin, if you will, pull up my shorty's chart. As you can see on this chart, from winter break to December 18th. From the 18th to the 24th, we had 11 positive and 10 staff members quarantined. From December 25th to 31st, we had 12 positive and 10 staff members quarantined. But since the holiday break ended, from January 1st to the 7th, we had 75 positives and 76 staff members quarantined. And the number continues to grow. We have significant concerns with the number of child education services staff members who have tested positive, as well as the number of classroom teachers who have tested positive or have had to be quarantined. You can go to our district website to see the full report on COVID-19. Kevin, you can take the chart down. At the November 13th board meeting, the board approved students returning in January to the metrics support of return. As all of us know, the metrics are very high at this time. We have continued to monitor the medical metrics daily for community spread, as well as the number of positive cases of COVID-19 among CCS students and staff members. As a reminder, we are monitoring several metrics and other factors that impact our transition from Plan B to Plan C. I mean, from Plan C to Plan B. Along with the medical metrics, we have considered the tremendous impact on student academic success, student social and emotional success, staff wellness, and the ability to staff classrooms upon our return. As a reminder, the overall medical metrics that we have been monitoring are case positivity, which at this time is at 15.2%. Daily cases per capita of 14-day decline. The rate of acceleration has been less than seven-day decline. But I mean, no of 14, right now we're less than seven. And number of active stresses, but we have no active stress. Other non-score metrics that we are monitoring are hospitalization, capacity, ability of students and staff to adhere to current guidelines. And the three W's: contact tracing and turnaround time. And staff readiness in terms of the buildings being prepared. Considering all of these things, and after much analysis, review, discussion with my cabinet, and I even say after much prayer, I'm adjusting return plan as follows. We are working with Dr. Green and Cumberland County Health Department to provide opportunity for all CCS staff to get vaccinated. As you may be aware, all educators, including board members, are considered essential workers and have been prioritized for the vaccine in Phase 1B, Group 1, and Group 2. We have already begun the process of releasing everyone for the vaccination. Dr. Green feels confident that we'll be able to resume vaccinated educators by the last week in January and by the first week of March, all educators should have had the opportunity to get vaccinated. With this in mind, and given the high and concerning COVID-19 measures currently present in our community, we are adjusting the face-to-face learning timeline in response to those measures and in order to align the anticipated return with the planned vaccination schedule. Therefore, we will begin cohort AABB reentry at the end of this quarter. EOC testing will be March 8th through 11th, and the first cohort of students will return on March 15th at the beginning of the fourth quarter. This will give us a solid three weeks in person, five to three grades. Of course, the year-round shows timeline is slightly different since they return on April 12th. Hopefully, we have spirit success during this time period and staff and students will prove that they're able to follow the guidelines and we won't have COVID-19 spreading within our school setting, as the research suggests. Additionally, we anticipate that during the next few weeks, the case positivity rates will decrease, defer to reject from the holidays and that impact. If for some reason at that time, the metrics are still too high, certainly the board could direct us differently. If that isn't the case, we will implement the will of the board. Additionally, if there is a different path that the board would like for us to take at this time, we will respond accordingly. We truly appreciate the tireless patience of all our students, families, staff, and board members during this noble pandemic. We also thank the essential staff who have continued to provide on-site support with food for students, technology, delivery of goods, military maintenance, and security during the quarantine period. Madam Chair, I entertain any questions you might have at this time about this adjustment, and Ms. Boland and my cabinet are available as well.
Are there any questions or comments? I see Ms. Jones' hand. I see Mr. West. I order, please. Ms. Jones?
Yes, good morning. I have a couple of questions. What are the consequences if you have some teachers that do not take the vaccine?
Right now, we're not requiring the vaccine, but we are throwing it in person. I plan to take it. Ms. Chisholm plans to take it. And both of us are encouraging everyone to help us get students and staff safely back in the building by taking it, but there is no consequence at this time.
And my last question is, so staff will have one vaccine, one part of the thing when students are going back in. Is it already set up for them to get the second part of it?
There is the second part of that old schedule. It is a three-week period between the two. But Dr. Green said that we'd be well on our way by the time we come back.
Thank you.
Dr. Conley, this is Greg. On the March 15 recommendation, is that all grades coming back AABB? Or is that a staggered reentry?
There will be K5, Melanie or Stacy will drop in and help me here. But it will be AABB alternating schedule, so students will only be two days a week. That's it. Community session, you're on me. Stacy's not able to hear you. Melanie, are you able to jump in? Well, it'll be...
Dr. Conley, if I may?
Go ahead, Ruben.
I believe the plan was to not stagger entry at this time due to the short amount of time between the start of face-to-face instruction and spring break. So I believe that was the discussion we had at Cabinet, sir.
Right. Thank you, Ruben. And it will be AABB, but it will be bringing everyone back or rotating then.
Correct, sir.
So all grades come back AABB on March 15th? I like that part of it. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else? I don't see anyone's hand on Dr. Conley. I'll hear from anyone.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Real proceed in that fashion. Shouldn't Ms. Van have her hand up? Ms. Chisholm, Ms. Van has her hand up.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. It just hit me. With all this going on and postponing it to March, which I completely understand. Touch on athletics. What does this mean for athletics? Any changes?
No changes at this time. Only stuff that's in season.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, Ms. Chisholm, one follow-up for Dr. Conley. When's, if the students are coming back March 15th, what's the plan for the staff?
Go ahead, Ruben.
Sorry. Mr. West, the plan would be to have them return, most likely the week following, just for preparation purposes?
Week following or week before?
Oh, sorry, the week before. Sorry. Yeah. Sorry about that.
That could be a little rough following. They haven't been together in a year.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Musgrave?
Now, the March 15 date, am I thinking that it will depend too on the metrics for them to come back? Is that a set date that they will come on?
That's the date we're sending them back, having the new weapon. The majority of our staff having been vaccinated. However, if the metrics are still extremely high and everyone has been vaccinated, but the board does not feel comfortable with everyone coming back, even with the vaccination, then certainly the board could make a different decision or direction at that time.
Okay, because I know with the vaccination, it's not a sure anything that nothing will happen, but it helps in the, you know, control of the disease. So I was just wondering about that. Well, thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am. We're not as that. It's not, the vaccination is not a cure, but we certainly hope it will help us to mitigate the potential spread or agitation.
Anyone else? Mr. McKeller?
Dr. Conley, this is for you, but any of your staff can answer it if you want to give it to them. What do we anticipate as far as the number of teachers and staff that will be anticipated coming back on the 15th? And if that will be enough to serve the students? And if not, what is our backup plan?
I have Ruben to help with this, but we anticipate that the holiday be AABB. Half of the students Monday, Tuesday, half of them Thursday, Friday. We may need to have enough staff, the staff, the classrooms. But we still have quite a few that will be versatile. Ruben, you want to jump in?
Yes, sir. Mr. McKeller, I think from a staffing standpoint, I think the staff in place, the staff that we have in place is sufficient to provide quality instruction as well as supervision. I think the biggest concern from a staffing perspective at this point has to do with the surge in the virus and the number of individuals that are out quarantining and/or in isolation. Hopefully, as we get into the March period, individuals would have had an opportunity to be vaccinated. We would have been out of the winter months and we would see a decrease in case positivity, which should have led off on the constraint that this is having on our sub availability. So from a HR, human capital perspective, I do believe we would be in good shape by that time, sir.
Okay, and what is our anticipated percent? Or maybe if, even if it's the completion of all the vaccinations, will they be all taking place by March the 15th? Do we anticipate that? Or we haven't figured out that schedule yet?
We anticipate that they will be completed by the time we return. The majority will be completed. And we're also including our permanent subs in the vaccination project.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Ms. Musgrave?
Do, I guess for more for Ruben, will the teachers still, will some teachers still have, will employees really have the option of working remote still?
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Musgrave, the availability of the vaccine is not going to impact the current accommodations request that we have in place that have been approved. So if those individuals have been approved to work through, telework through the duration of Plan B, that the availability of the vaccine would not impact that, at least through this academic year. I think we will assess, once we get through this academic year, the impact that will have next year. But for this year, if a staff member has submitted a telework request that was approved by their principal and human resources, that would not, that would not change at this point, Ms. Musgrave.
Okay, then. Thank you.
But Ruben, would you speak to the transparency? The fact that we have not accommodated everyone's... But Ruben, can you, can you speak to the transparency, uh, the fact that we have not accommodated everyone's requests?
Yeah, yes, sir. Um, and and I believe this is something that we've touched on in previous meetings. Um, as of right now, we have about two hundred and ninety-five requests to telework. As you guys know, the the uh, ability for us to have every teacher that wants to telework, telework is just not uh, is just not feasible because we need staff um, supervising students while students are on site. You know, this um, this delay of reentry will will allow um, those individuals to continue teaching, allow a continuity of service and um, and hopefully, when the numbers are a little bit better and folks have an opportunity to be vaccinated, um, that will increase uh, our our staff's comfort in returning. So as I indicated to Ms. Musgrave, um, if a request has been submitted and approved, that will not change the outcome, but we may have some staff that, once they are vaccinated, they may feel more comfortable returning and 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 we will leave that up to them um, at at that particular point in time.
And along that line, um, I hope nobody takes this the wrong way, but I just want to share with you, I read everything about the um, the virus and the school systems and everything. Um, and I truly pray, and I don't see us doing that, I hope we don't. There was one school system who told the people, they either return to work or they will no longer be salaried. And um, we hope we never have to uh, turn to that. But um, I hope we're all reading, I'm sure we are, everything that we see in reference to the the other school systems and what the um, medical um, community is saying also. It's a bad way to have to go, I think, but one school system did do that. I hope we don't ever do that, but.
Ms. Chisholm, can I ask one more um, question about the high school E O Cs? What's the plan for those?
Good morning, Mr. West. Um, we plan to do the E O Cs and the C T E um, assessments the week of March the eighth through the eleventh. We'll be able to get those students in and um, I've already contacted D P I and we will request for permission to test outside the window and all of that will be done online. So we'll be able to proceed along with that. And then when the students come back on the fifteenth, all the testing will be completed.
Thank you, buddy.
Oh, and another thing I noticed um, in watching all the stats from from uh, Cumberland County Health Department and um, notices that Dr. Conley and Shirley gives us. We hear a lot about the sports, but there we had, Dr. Conley, how many teams have we had where almost the whole team had to um, take time?
Ms. Chisholm, this is Shirley. We currently have two teams under quarantine.
Oh, okay, thank you. And that's all we have had?
Uh, no, sir, no, ma'am. I believe we've had two others. But at this time, we have two.
Okay. I'd like us to keep that in mind too, because we, it looks as if we are, everyone is insisting that the the teams can function because it's safe for them. And then I notice whenever we have those uh, complete teams that have to quarantine. So we need to take care of our our um, athletes, athletes, athletes all the time. Yes, whose hand did I say? Mr. Warford?
Thank you, Ms. Chisholm. Um, I just have a cu- a couple of questions slash concerns. The uh, so the 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 metrics, we're we're still talking about pending uh, positive uh, metrics as far as uh, a return uh, now in uh, in March. Do, is there, is there any, can we get any guidance on what positive COVID metrics look like at this point? I I'm still, I feel like it's still a little unclear as to what we're we're aiming for at this point.
Well, our original goal was seven percent. But everyone knows we know what year that right now, uh, at fifteen uh, just percent. That's why I said our strategy now is to get everyone vaccinated. We do anticipate that the metrics may be still high in March. Uh, and at that point, uh, the board will need to give us direction, do we continue March? Return, given that majority have been vaccinated, or do we make a different decision?
Okay, I I understand that. Thank you for clarifying that. Um, I guess my other concern based on that is I I, the uh, this A B C Science Collaborative Presentation that we had uh, last week made it seem like uh, schools were uh, i- if done properly and safely, uh, having kids back in schools doesn't increase the spread of this virus and in kids, kids are actually uh, just as, are probably safer in the school setting. Uh, you know, uh, uh, following the three Ws uh, than they would be out in the general public. So I was, I was just wondering um, if that's factoring in as well to the uh, positive COVID metrics uh, benchmark that you're trying to hit?
Yes, sir. We are considering that science, that research. And that's why I was saying, maybe add on the initial help of having the vaccine would help people feel more comfortable about returning. But uh, the research shows that the structure uh, and order of the student is what tends to help reduce it amongst staff and students. And right now, out in the community, they don't have much structure.
Understood. Um, and I I wasn't a part of the vote back in November. I I wasn't on the board uh, yet. But uh, as to the uh, the vaccination schedule, the current vaccination schedule being a part of this uh, this uh, postponement for um, return to school, uh, I I believe back in November, there really wasn't a a realistic belief that there would even be a vaccination until the summer this year. So I know that that wasn't even something that was factoring into uh, the dates that were chosen at that time. So um, at this point, uh, seeing as how uh, Ms. Jones, the answer to her question was that nobody's required to take this vaccination. So if we come back, we guess, we start getting closer to March fifteenth and we have a lot of uh, staff and uh, people that just decide not to take the vaccination, i- is that going to be something that negatively impacts our ability to go back on the fifteenth?
I I think that's certainly something we have to consider. But our hope is, and our hope is not a strategy, but our hope is that the majority of our staff would be concerned enough about their own health as well as the health of others, that they will in fact take the vaccine, but we have promised that.
Dr. Conley, may I add something to the metric conversation, please?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, um, board members, one of the other things I want, uh, we're looking at hospitalizations, but I want to break it down just a little bit more for you. Uh, we're going to not only be looking at hospitalizations, but we're looking at the number of beds, that um, regular beds that are occupied by um, COVID patients, the number of beds that are occupied just by regular citizens, and then the number of ICU beds that are occupied by COVID patients and number ICU beds that are available. So when we take all of that, we'll pull all those metrics together, including the case positivity rate, to make a decision. So it will not just be um, under those four categories, but we will look at those specifics as well and collaborate with Kate Furballi and the Health Department, make sure we have all of the data to make an informed decision and recommendation.
Thank you, Shirley. Um, Ms. Van? Donna?
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Chisholm. Um, and I just, I've got a concern, and I know the minute I say this, um, I'm gonna get a whole lot of emails and letters and and, you know, submit. But I think it needs, that concerns me, Dr. Conley, to say that um, those that will look at, you know, those that choose not to take the vaccine, and that's somebody's choice. I I I get that, that it's somebody's choice. But if I didn't want to go back to work face-to-face, but I didn't have a um, extenuating circumstance that would allow me to continue um, virtual, I I hope that we, by me refusing to take the vaccine, that that we wouldn't allow the, those teachers to just remain virtual because they chose not to take the vaccine. I I don't know. As I said, I know that this is um, a big issue as far as whether people want to take the vaccine or not. But um, you know, we're a profession that uh, we, I don't know. I know the metrics are high now. I'm okay with what we, what was just done. But once everybody is vaccinated or given the chance to be vaccinated, and there's not a reason, are we just gonna? I guess that's my question. Are we just gonna say, okay? Or are we gonna get back to educating our children uh, halfway normal?
Well, again, Ms. Van, right now, uh, there's been no decision to require uh, either testing or the vaccine. But I do believe that our premier profession, majority of them are concerned enough about their own health and the health of others and helping to eradicate this pandemic, that majority of our staff will do what I believe is the right thing and take the vaccine.
Ms. Musgrave, I saw your hand.
Um, I know um, with the vaccine, um, a lot of people might not take it, especially if they're African-American, because of the history of that kind of thing with testing. So we, it might not be that the person just does not want to go back to work or, you know, not caring about children because most of our teachers that we have now are working to the brim to try to see if things are done. But we can't just dismiss people who, unless we have done something to really let them know that is very, very safe, and I think that's what uh, a lot of people are doing when they take the test, is to let folk know, especially African-American, that they can uh, safely take that test and they are not guinea pigs or anything, as they have been in some of the other uh, testing uh, situations that we have had, just as a point of information.
Yes, Ms. Musgrave. Um, Dr. Green has been knowing of P S As on the radio, other doctors, uh, and will continue to share information about the efficacy of the vaccine as well as the safety. I understand your point.
Thank you. I saw Ms. Williams, but I'm gonna have a question to uh, Susan, if I may, at this time. I don't think it is, but will the um, will taking the vaccine be a requirement for going into the school? Well, is there any requirement that the teachers must take the vaccine? If they're gonna go back person to person? Or have, it may not have been anything um, cited on that factor, but that's one thing I was wondering about.
Uh, Mrs. Shaw, I might be able to fix this, but right now, I don't believe we have the authority to require it.
That's correct, Dr. Conley.
Okay. Okay, um, I saw Ms. Williams, and I'll get you, um, Mr. Warford.
Thank you, Ms. Chisholm. I um, I I'm just sitting here trying to process what I've been processing for the last week and reminding myself that there's not a perfect answer. So um, but I I, my question or my comment was going to be, and Dr. Conley, I think you already mentioned this, that I have asked or I have felt, I've expressed this to you and and to Ruben, and I think maybe to even Shirley, I can't remember who all I've talked to, but uh, we have to get the information about the vaccine out. Um, my goal is to be one of the first to take the vaccine. I I will be in that first group and hopefully set the example. I don't take it lightly. I've conferred with my doctor. My doctor has given me written permission. Um, my ninety-one-year, almost ninety-one-year-old mother has, is scheduled to take it this afternoon. I've consulted with all of her doctors and they, and and that's a number of people, of course, she's in great health, considering. But she gets the back, the first dose of the Moderna vaccine this afternoon. We're educators. We have to read the information out and make that decision. The consequences of not taking it are personal, and I truly believe that. I mean, obviously, we can't make anybody do it. If you ask me what I believe, I believe the right thing to do is take it. But again, that's my personal belief. I'm gonna set the example by taking it. My family is taking it, two of which are educators. My extended family is taking it, which are in the medical profession, who've advised me that they have done great research. To Mr. Warford's point, I think he was spot on. The game plan has changed since November. I truly believe that. I had no idea that on January the twelfth, I'd be able to get my mother vaccinated. No, I I had already told her, Mom, here's what we gotta do, here's the plan, because it's been difficult for her too. Um, I have encouraged teachers, you know, probably not getting this until April or May, but you know, read the information, make your decisions. I am disappointed today, Dr. Conley. I did want children to go back. I still want children to go back, but I believe your plan is equitable, that it gives us the opportunity to be able to return safely. I do believe the A B C Collaborative shows that we still are gonna have to take precautions. But based on what I've read, I believe by this date that you propose, we will be able to return. Again, I appreciate, and I want to say this publicly, all the emails. And finally, I think I may have responded to every single one this morning. I I can't remember. There's, they've been numerous. And it's hard to respond and tell people what you want them to hear. Everybody wants to hear that you agree with what they say. But I will say that I appreciate our Cumberland County staff and employees. We have to hear from you. We have to know what you think, and that does play a part. Um, but Dr. Conley, I appreciate your, basically, you're stepping back and punting again. And that's what we have to do. We're in times, as Ms. Ms. Sutton said this many times, these are unprecedented times. Um, and and we don't know what the next step is. The only thing we can do is base it on the research that we have. Again, I'm encouraging our employees, read the information that is science-based on this vaccine. Find out what your doctor thinks. I I mean, your personal doctor knows you. Surely, they know the implications. And that's really all we can do. I'm trying not to feel defeated because we've got employees out there counting on us. We're setting the example. And so I'm gonna set that example when it gets my turn to take the vaccine, and I'm gonna support those who do and those who don't. Ruben, I appreciate the position you're gonna be in. I've talked with you several times. I appreciate the information you've given me concerning if we open the building, how many people we wouldn't have in place. But I do believe that by March, we can have those people. So Ruben, thank you for that information. Again, we gotta have teachers in place. We gotta have staff members in our, that are driving those buses and all those kinds of things. So I appreciate all that you're doing. Um, this is a difficult situation. Principals, I I can't even imagine, you know, one day we're going, one day we're not going, one month we're doing. I I just appreciate all of you and what you do. I sincerely believe the answer is, is in this vaccine, and I hope I'm right. If I'm wrong, I've been wrong before, but I'm believing that based on what I've read, um, it will. um, it will help our numbers go down. And I, so I, I support you, Dr. Conley, in what you're doing.
Well said, Susan.
Thank you, Ms. Williams, and um our number one priority remains safety. Safety remains our number one priority. I will share with you to Ms. Musgrave's earlier um comment. Uh, obviously, I'm part of the African-American community, and that is a lot of reservation. Um, but uh I'm among a group of clergy who are meeting with some physicians uh about the vaccine to try to help the African-American community feel more comfortable. Um, also, I have reached out to clergy uh here in Cumberland County uh to consider doing the same. Meet with the doctors, because uh all of you may know, or you may not know, but uh traditionally in the African-American community, um parishioners trust their pastor, but they don't trust anyone else. Um, so therefore, we believe that pastors can have a positive influence on what people feel about the vaccine. So we're reaching out to all stakeholders to help us educate the community and all our educators about the vaccine.
Thank you, Dr. Conley. Mr. Warfel, I saw your hand again.
Yeah, I just have two quick questions. Um, Dr. Conley, was there any discussion um regarding assessing the, the metrics and the vaccination progress at, at an earlier date? Uh, I understand that right now, the, the idea is that um we have a date that's right at the beginning of the fourth quarter, which, which makes sense, but I know that uh last semester, when the, the decision was made to go full virtual to the end of the year, it wasn't but a few weeks after that decision was made that the metrics would have been within for a short period of time within the, the goal that we're trying to hit at this point and possibly could have been able to get, get kids back to school at that point. Um, so I was wondering if there was any discussion about possibly assessing the situation that before March fifteenth, because right now we're at a two-month delay. Um, I didn't know if there was anything about that that you could speak to.
Yes, Mr. Warfel, we, we actually talked about that amongst our agenda. We'll be adding something to our dashboard about the number of staff that have been vaccinated uh on a weekly basis, so you'll be able to see that. Um, but we didn't feel that instruction in um this matter to finish out the quarter as we are and then uh allow the vaccine to start a new quarter afresh. Um, rather than filling somewhat like a um seesaw on neither the last couple of weeks in the quarter. So we take it's um the best instructional transition point.
Uh, Donna, I'll, I'll get you right after me. Were you calling, uh, Ms. Sutton?
Yes, um, just one comment, a quick, quick. We, we referred back to last week with the ABC uh uh coalition and the doctor that came, and we keep overlooking a very important point that was in her slide. High community spread means high school spread. And if we have the metrics that we can guide ourselves by continually, that will save and prevent death. And if we go by the CDC warning, the World Health Organization, they urge you, if you have high community spread, please don't put people in positions to become infected. I do not understand why this keeps going around and around and around. We all want our children back in school. We all want teachers back in the buildings teaching. We all want our cafeteria workers back in the cafeteria working. But we do not want to put not one single life at risk. And I hope going forward that we will look at not only uh going back into a building or putting kids in the buildings, but looking at the entire safety of all our people in Cumberland County, not just some.
You finished, Ms. uh Sutton?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. I would like to, um, hopefully, as a, as a um sense of encouragement to um encourage everybody to to take the vaccination. I plan to take it and lot it exists on my two younger daughters. I am seventy-nine years old. I went, I made my checkup with my cardiologist yesterday. He had said that he see no reason why I could not take it. I'd like to, I plan to take it to protect myself, but also hopefully to encourage as many people who feel safe about it to take it. I plan to have a conversation with my health, my general health doctor and see what um she says. I am very distasteful of shots and needles and stuff, do not like them at all. But I am going to take this um vaccination because I, I do believe in it because I believe in what the experts have told us about it. Uh, but most of all, my trust is in my Savior. As I have said many times, whatever God has for me is his plan, and I'm willing to accept it. Uh frustration or fear or but I will do it. I do plan to take it and hope I will be a, a, not so much an inspiration, but a encouragement to others to take it, and especially our um educators, so that we can get our children back to school. But I don't like vaccinations. I stopped taking the flu shot, but I do take my new pneumonia shot. So um hopefully that will encourage somebody to take it along with us. And um, Ms. Van, I saw your hand again.
Donna, you must be.
Thank you, yes. Um, I just wanna, going back to what Nathan was talking about, um, I hadn't thought about this, Dr. Conley, but, you know, now, when we're saying that we want to start at the beginning of the nine weeks, um the, not long after that, we have another holiday, we have spring break, which then, you know what happens every time we have a holiday? Um, and people are together, if, you know, the metrics go up. So I I'm just want to make the, the comment um that I agree with Nathan that if our num, if everybody um that's gonna be vaccinated has been vaccinated and um the metrics are on the downslide, I'm not saying that a perfect, but according to the ABC, um on the downslide, um could we not revisit this um for an earlier date because I I don't know why, I just see that, you know, we start school and then all of a sudden we get out for spring break and come back and everything starts and we'll have to, you know, go back home and and really hindsight's twenty-twenty, and I know that, but when we look back, um, you know, in September, we could have been in school in October, and then it was when the holidays and things started um coming about that everything went up. So again, hindsight's twenty-twenty and we can't look back. Um, but we can learn from that and maybe look forward and just keep an eye and, and not be so rigid on that fifteenth, that maybe if everything's looking good, we can look at it before the fifteenth. Is that something that is possible or um that just is not feasible? Um, Dr. Conley?
Ms. Van, anything is possible. Um we believe this is our best academic recommendation uh for transition, but it's a more direct otherwise with intimate.
Okay, um, and I have just one more question, and, and, you know, we, we talk about the community spread um going into the school or the school uh spread going out in the community, I guess it's more or less which comes first, the chicken or the egg? Um, but in the um like in the ABC, if I recall, and, and what things that pop out at me are that the s, the structure in the school of, of following the three Ws and, and working um together with struc, with structure. Um, it lessens the spread than it does for the unstructure out in the community, and that's one of the reasons why we're seeing so much of it is because people are tired of being in the house and they're out, you know, the kids are playing. I told you when I was um uh running um for election when I was, anyway, the, all the kids that were on the playground, so um it was just amazing. So um again, and who knows? I don't know for, for sure, but it, it is one of those sayings, uh which comes first, the chicken or the egg? And I believe it's the um, you know, the community spread is coming first, and if we could get them in school, we might could slow that down some. But that's my personal opinion. Um, but thank you.
Any further?
Ms. Sutton, I have one other comment too. I do want to put something, uh, I think we need to really make this clear, so no misinformation to go out to the public. You, I've heard it referred twice to back in uh September and August, we could have been in school. Back in September and August, no one knew the dynamics of this virus. We were all learning it. The World Health Organization said five percent. When we began school, the infection rate was higher than five percent. That's why we asked not to expose people to this virus and put people's lives at risk. I don't look at it as a chicken and egg. I look at it as human life. And it's important that we as human beings have empathy and caring for folk and not refer to them so simply as a chicken when they are concerned about their well-being. We did that back in September because of the World Health Organization's recommendation. Since September, everything has changed. It's a constant evolving experience. We're learning about this virus. We're in places where we've never been before. This is why everything is changing, and to say something concrete today about March is premature. And I applaud you, Dr. Conley, for going for March, looking at March, and if the metrics are high and out of control in March, we would need to do the same thing that we're doing now. Put people's lives and their well-being first.
Thank you, Mr. Warfel. I saw your hand.
Uh, just two things. Um, one, one of the biggest takeaways from Dr. Akimboyo, and I may have butchered her name, you know, if she's listening, I apologize. But her presentation uh last week was that the the uh community uh positivity rate or the, the amount of cases in the community was a reflection of the, of what they were seeing in schools that were open and communities where schools were open. They were, she was basically saying that there really wasn't any difference in community spread in areas where schools were in a Plan B type of uh plan uh in, with kids actually in the classroom uh as opposed to uh areas where they were just full virtual. Um, she was basically saying that the community spread wasn't increased by the fact that kids were back in school. Um
Excuse me, Ms. Sutton, do not cut across, please.
That's, but we, we can't put misinformation out to the public and let it ride.
Wait till, um, Ms. Sutton, will you please wait till he finish? Thank you. Mr. Warfel, you may finish.
I mean, that was my understanding of her presentation. I even asked her a follow-up question just to clarify that issue um uh at the end of her presentation. But uh my other uh question, it, it might just be, uh, this might be best for uh Nick to answer. Um, the, as far as the board's responsibility to vote on issues relating to uh future delays with regards to getting kids back in school, uh, was that something, was, was, are all future delays delegated to uh Mr., to Dr. Conley as part of that, um, I guess the plan from back in November that was approved?
Mr. Warfel, the uh, the last motion that was approved by the board uh that allowed for Plan B re-entry pending positive metrics did leave the superintendent's authority to extend out the re-entry calendar. But I think what Dr. Conley has made clear in a couple of his comments so far this morning is that, you know, obviously, we respect the prerogatives of the board, the staff respects that, superintendent does, and the board always retains authority to, you know, um, make a decision other than, than what uh staff is currently executing based upon that last board decision.
Understood. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Now, uh, Ms. uh Sutton?
Yes, ma'am. I just want to make sure that the community does not receive misinformation. I did the follow-up question, Mr. Warfel, to the doctor last week. I asked her about her two slides, and in her slide, she made it clear and she repeated it. High community spread, high school spread. So if we're gonna talk stuff and put stuffs out in the community, let's don't try to rewrite history. Let's put accurate information back in the community. That's ninety-nine percent of the problem that's going on right now is just total misinformation and non-truth and the rewriting of history. And I don't think we should c- continue to just belabor this point. Dr. Conley has made his recommendation, either we accept it and move on, or we vote differently.
Dr. Conley, were, were you not just, um, I, I see you now, Ms. McKell, I'll get you. Were you, help me get a better understanding. Were you not just relaying to us the schedule as you proposed it going forward? You were not asking? Were you, were you not asking for us to make a decision on it? Or you were just letting us know what, what was best? I see Nick's hand. Nick, you gonna help me with this?
Yeah, yes, ma'am. Uh, if I may, um, just following up on, on Dr. Conley's remarks and Mr. Warfel's question and, and that conversation just now. Dr. Conley's acting upon the authority of the board's decision from, if memory serves, November thirteenth, um, which again, gave him discretion to act based upon metrics. Uh, but again, as he's made clear, the, the board retains ultimate authority, but what he's laying out for you all today is just the path forward based on the previous board decision and within that previous authority. The board can always change it, make whatever decision it wants to that's different, but um that's, that's what he's basing it upon and is not requesting a, any uh new decision today.
Okay.
I might add that may, on that November thirteenth decision, but saying if the methods allow, uh, and so what I'm saying this morning is if we only look at the methods, it don't allow. But now that we have something new in our arsenal, the vaccine, that's why I'm saying maybe we can move forward once everyone or, or the majority of the staff has been vaccinated. That's what I'm offering.
Thank you, Dr. Conley. Uh, and we beat this for a good little while now. Any further um questions or concerns? Okay, if not, Dr. Conley, you want to finish your remarks?
Misses, Ms. Metella has had a.
Oh, did? Oh, yes, I did. I saw you. I, I forgot, Ms. McKell, my apologies. Yes, sir.
My comments are very short. I just
My comments are very short. I just, uh, I think that the March fifteenth is a good date. Uh, what I think we should be about to, I would encourage all of us to do is to work with our teachers and staff and do it in a sensitive manner. Even those who may be hesitant to take the vaccine, uh, if we approach them properly, identify that it's not just good for them to get back in school, but it's, it serves them, their health in a good manner. Be sensitive and don't do things that are considered to be of uh negative in their eyesight, like demanding they do this or demanding they do that. I've found that when you work with people and make them part of the process and you show them the benefits of what they're doing, uh, it always works out better. So I think that we should be very sensitive, promote the vaccine because I think that gives us our best chance for the March fifteenth day.
Thank you, Ms. McKell. I really appreciate those, uh, remarks, and um, I agree with you completely.
My only other comment is that, um, there's a question about year-round, and then year-round has intercession. So I did live that it's actually April when they would transition back in after their intercession period. That's year-round. They're double.
Okay. Do you want to continue, Dr. Conley?
No, ma'am. Uh, that's all I have. Um.
You had your last two pages? I'm not, you just want us to read them and be knowledgeable of them? Cause you just got far as your page two.
Yes, ma'am. That, that's um, all I have. The other information was just um, the charts and information for the board that I sent you all.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much, and thank everybody for your, uh, comments and, and, um, questions and, uh, I, I hope that we could, um, remember the last remarks that we had. That was from Mr. McKell. Yes, let's be compassionate. Nobody is more afraid of needles than me. And maybe somebody else is, but anyway, but let's kind of encourage each other cause we will be protecting ourselves and protecting our families. But um, like Dr. Conley said, being um, of the Michael's race that I am, I'm reluctant to take any kind of shots also, but let's be encouraging. I do plan to take the shot. Dr. Conley and I plan to take it on the same day. And I think Mr. West is gonna join us also. You can try to get him in it, even though he's a little younger than I am. Both of them are younger than me, but still, let's, seriously, let's, um, let's work on it. Let's all try to get ourselves covered, cause by taking the vaccine, you cover yourself also and your family. So now, um, we'll get off that bandbox. Let's uh move on to after the superintendent's. Pete, you, we've been talking and you've been quiet, so hopefully you're ready. It's time for.
We're ready to vote on the consideration of the, uh, adoption of the agenda.
Okay. Oh, I thought the public forum went before that.
Public forum, Ms. Chisholm, you're correct.
Yes, you, you are correct, Ms. Chisholm. We're, we're ready for that as well.
That's why I'm saying, I hope you read.
Thank you.
Now it's time for your public forum. There'll be a maximum of thirty minutes set aside for this. We saw the many uh emails and stuff. No way we could get through all of them in thirty minutes, but anyway, Pete and whoever's assisting her today will read the submissions. And each person has three minutes. Who said that right? I mean, Mr. Horn, is that right? Okay. Thank you. So now we're on to Pete with the public forum.
Yes, ma'am. Each submission is limited to three minutes and we have a thirty-minute total. Um, Mr. Young in the background is going to get, uh, monitor our three minutes for each submission. And Ms. Muscle White has agreed to help me read these. We will read through as many as we can get through in the next thirty minutes. However, all submissions are shared with the board. Just want to let our community know that, um, that we share everything with you, even if it's not read during our meeting allowed. So I will start with our first submission from Michelle Hollis. Dr. Conley and board members, as the date approaches for our schools to finally open, I want to thank you for all you have done to understand the research-based science that supports allowing our children to return to the classroom. After listening to the physician with the ABC Science Collaborative speak last week, I am in a hundred percent agreement that Dr. Conley's robust plan will allow our children and educators to return to the classroom safely. After doing some more of my own research, the evidence also shows that by having fifty thousand children, which is one-sixth of our county's population, in a controlled environment each day at school, meaning their temperatures will be checked and masks be enforced, opening schools could actually help reduce the COVID numbers in our community. And without a doubt, the numbers of suicides and suicide attempts, as well as the number of ER visits for mental health issues with our children will decrease. It has been more than three hundred days since any child in Cumberland County public schools has stepped into a classroom, and it is time. Thank you again for allowing the experts' opinions and allowing our schools to finally open. No one can make a wrong decision by putting the children first. Our second submission comes from Sarah Self. Good morning. My favorite thing about the American government is the system of checks and balances. No office holds too much power without being checked by another branch of government. I'm realizing that local politics have left you guys unchecked, unbalanced. Your elected officials that should represent your constituents. The most recent surveys show that at least sixty percent of students and families, as well as at least sixty percent of teachers, are ready to return to school face-to-face, a clear majority. A scientist and physician sat in front of you last week and told you that science shows that students can learn face-to-face safely, no matter what the percent positive of the community is. She said some of the counties represented in her data had positivity rates of twenty-five percent or even higher. Please do not ignore the science nor your constituents. Open the schools at least on a hybrid model for those students that want to return, no matter the metrics. The students can do it, and so can the teachers. They can wash, wait, and wear. They can clean and learn to be mindful. My daughter sees that her cousins in other states and cities have returned, and she cannot understand why her kindergarten class is in our basement at her virtual reta- virtual learning facility. Let's stay the track and follow our meticulous plan like science, data, and the majority of our community is suggesting we do. I wish I could be there in person to read this to you. We are trying to hold you accountable. Your powers are greater than you know. It is time to check yourself and realize the difference you can make for fifty thousand students. Is it a positive difference? Only you can decide. Our next submission comes from Tracy Moore. Good morning, CCS Board of Education members. Thank you for taking a moment to read my letter. Ms. Musgrave, Ms. Jones, Ms. Sutton, and Mr. McKeller, thank you for hearing us and always standing boldly in the face of adversity and criticism. Ms. Chisholm, I'm hoping to hear you soon. I still feel that you waver and sway on your stance. Mr. West, Ms. Van, Mr. Warfel, and Ms. Williams, I've watched the recap of each meeting with so much anxiety, so much uncertainty. If we stick to the metrics that has been previously voted on and approved, then the remainder of my letter is null and void. But if by chance you attempt to disregard the metrics when the entire state is red, it is my hope that you walk into schools and help support us. Tell kindergarteners to pull up their masks, help console them from a distance of six feet, ride the buses with our premier professionals, come out, take temperatures, provide support so a teacher can use the bathroom. Show us that you are here for us in physical action and not from the safety net of administrative buildings and offices. After all, if you practice three Ws, take temperatures, and answer no to the questions on the attestation form, we are all protected from COVID. Keep in mind, our governor begs us weekly to do this, and the cases still continue to skyrocket. I know that the four of you are battling, battling between what you feel schools need to open and what you know COVID is deadly unpredictable, and how will I live with my decision if something happens to any one of the fifty thousand eight hundred and eighty students and twelve thousand twenty-four staff members. We can recover learning loss. We can provide social, emotional support. Families can seek therapy and community resources, but we cannot bring back a, a life that is lost. Our next submission comes from Pat Moore. Good morning, CCS Board members. Living during a deadly pandemic has caused many people to flock to social media in droves for support, a place to vent and join forces with the like-minded event, individuals. Oftentimes, these places are driven by anger, frustration, and over time develop a mob-like mentality that is fueled by anger that schools are closed. I have watched and have since left because I have seen how they belittle, laugh, attack, bully, threaten, disrespect, take screenshots, call the news with the inkling of someone who goes against their agenda. We do not accept bullying in schools, and it should not be allowed from parents. I was sick to my stomach when I saw that a post had, had went viral from a CCS parent who is also the group leader, sent a disrespectful and threatening email to Ms. Musgrave. Proudly, this email was posted in this group and displayed for thousands of people to see. Unfortunately, I can clearly see why the board is divided. Nathan Warfel and Donovan are also in this group, and they never once condemned dismantle or offered support to Ms. Musgrave or the many teachers who speak up to offer insight or support to the teachers or parents in this group. Silence is an answer too. It is clear the agenda of several board members. It's my hope that you realize this is not a game or a political agenda. When you are a board member, you represent, represent the entire county. In light of recent events, I fear that several board members only care and support the thoughts, beliefs, agendas of a small, select group of CCS parents. I encourage you all to be bold, brave, stand up in the face of adversity, stick to the metrics. More now than ever is a time that the board stands united and not divided with the entire state in the red zone. It's time the board looks at the entire county and not take eighty minutes to discuss skylights. It is time that the board stands unanimously together like Durham Public Schools. We expect and need premier board members, just like CCS employs premier professionals. Thank you. Now, Ms. Musgrave is gonna read a few.
Um, Mrs. Muscle White, now we'll read, I will read the next four.
You're right. I'm sorry. I read Ms. Musgrave's name. I'm sorry.
Submission number five, Michael Diego. I will keep this simple as I've sent in comments and emails countless times to what appears to deaf ears, but our schools need to remain closed until it is safe for everyone. Everyone includes the teachers and staff, not just the kids. I look forward to the day that my kids can return to school, but not until it is safe. Please take into consideration like Durham Public Schools will remain virtual the rest of this school year. If you open back up and people begin to get sick, it is coming to be terrible. Just think, if only one teacher or staff member dies from COVID complications at each school. That is a small percentage, but that is a large number for our county. So I ask you, who are you willing to risk and how many? We all know Mr. West don't care because he said that teachers are holding education hostage by not wanting to return to work. And for that, I say shame on you. Shame that you don't care enough about people to know they need help, not just you looking down at them from your private office. You, sir, are not fit to be on the Board of Education. Submission number six, Bernice Brown. I am coming to you to talk about how high these numbers are, and I want to know why you are allowing the staff and children to re-enter, re-enter the school when it is not safe to do so. I feel like the staff is just as important as the students. The parents need to take responsibility in their child education. It's not all on the teachers. I think you should reconsider in allowing the schools to stay virtual until this virus is under control for the better safety of all staff and children. Submission number seven, Proz V Sellers. I feel the numbers are entirely too high for teachers, let alone students, to return to in-person learning. With the new strand being out and majority of our state being in red, including Cumberland County, I feel you are making a big mistake. Please consider remaining on virtual learning until our numbers decrease. Submission number eight, Haley Smith Williams. Good morning, Board of Education members. I want to say Happy New Year, and I pray and hope that each of you enjoyed your time with your family. I know that we are quickly approaching the possibility of reopening schools. I have a few questions. Have you ever witnessed a loved one with an active case of COVID try really hard to catch his or her breath? Have you ever watched someone's oxygen saturation rate go from ninety-five to ninety? Have you witnessed someone pray to live? Have you, do you have a family member or a friend who has passed away from COVID? Well, I do, and I have also watched my sister struggle to catch her breath and pray and cry because she has five children that she and her husband has to take care of. Her will to live was greater than her will to die. I was on FaceTime with her every night, trying to help her through the process, through positivity and prayer. Fourteen days later, she is unable to somewhat move around, but we know it could take a while before she returns back to one hundred percent. I just want to point out that it is not the case for over three hundred and forty thousand people in the United States. May I tell you how she contracted the virus through someone who was asymptomatic? My grandfather passed away the same way. He contracted the virus through someone who was asymptomatic, and unfortunately, he did not make it. All that I am asking is that CCS sticks to the metrics, positive metrics. Let's remember on January sixth, over four thousand people lost their lives to COVID. Our district does not need to add to these numbers. Please take into consideration every person involved. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Muscle White. Our next submission comes from Michelle Harris. I'm writing in my comments that as a school board, you need to come together and do the right thing and keep our school virtual the rest of the year. There is too much to risk to reopen, even with a few going at a time. You're just going to spread that virus among your staff and teachers so quickly that you will have people out all the time. Plus, you will be putting their health at risk. Masked help, but they are not a hundred percent. If so, we would not be in the posi- this position. So please, I'm begging of you to consider the risk and keep our kids learning virtually. It might not be the best thing, but it's better than a kid or a teacher being lowered into the ground in a graveyard. Our next submission comes from Amanda Fitzgerald. As we know, we live in a world that thrives on social media. Unfortunately, social media is being used to slander and misrepresent many of the board members. I was troubled to read an intimidating post from an MH lady who used her voice and keyboard to intimidate a current board member by saying she would be running against her in the next election because she felt she was being ignored. I have my personal feelings about that childish behavior, but that's my own opinion, which does not matter. This is not Survivor Island. This is not a game. We are gambling the lives of CCS staff and these precious babies. The unknown is too great. Unfortunately, our county is being divided in two, two, but I refuse to allow my tax dollars and Cumberland County schools to be torn into two, which is evident because Donna and Nathan are part of this Facebook troll group and didn't feel the need to defend the board member that they were supposed to be working with from public attack. Stick to the metrics and not personal agendas. If people want to watch drama, they have television for that. Our next submission comes from Melissa Elias. Dear board members, the work is not done yet. Eighty-four counties in North Carolina are in critical, in a critical state of community spread, including Cumberland County. Our percentage reported by the state as of one-sixth is fifteen point eight percent. That is more than double the percentage that has been agreed upon by the board members, families, and staff. As stated by the ABC Collective, schools can open safely if the community metrics support it. At this time, our community has failed to reduce the spread. Mask wearing, social distancing, and limited gatherings is not happening. This is not conducive to a healthy school environment. Many other states and countries have gambled with reopening, only to shut down schools again. New reports of how students can spread COVID are coming in daily, and more students are testing positive. In Los Angeles, one in three students at, at some open schools are testing positive. This supports what the ABC Collaborative has said. Until community spread is under control, we will see a matching spread of the virus. That is only one instance. That is only one instance. I will not send you dozens of other links that support this. New reports about learning gains are also coming. Students are making the same gains they were pre-pandemic. And this person also submits some links that I will not go through, reading all those links to you. There are some students that are failing to do what needs to be done. This has been the case pre-pandemic or now. All members of the community should be stepping up to the plate to support students. CCS offers tutoring, tech support, social services, and much more. Thank you CCS for working so hard to support our students and families. It is much appreciated that you not only are working towards keeping us growing, learning, but also safe during a time when many are trying to disregard science for their own benefit. And if you wish to look at those links, you can see that submission number 11. Submission number 12 comes from DeeDee Harris. Hello, I'm submitting my remarks as my children are in class now, right now, learning. Yes, you heard me right. My children are learning and doing well. The fact that just because students are not in actual school buildings does not mean kids are not learning. They are. But when parents don't buy into the system, the kids will not. Some parents, such as the reopen our schools Facebook group, are quick to jump up and say kids are doing poorly because of isolation. Why are kids so isolated? Do they get locked in a room alone all day and see no one? They are quick to post about a student committing suicide, saying it's because schools are closed, but this is a problem that has been troubling our youth for years, not because of COVID. They are just taking the facts and twisting them to meet their needs. The fact that they use this group to get Nathan voted into the Board of Education is a disgrace. They used it to get what they wanted, as he promised opening in that group to reopening the school as soon as he got elected. The fact that one of the main leaders in this group keeps posting as a healthcare worker, she knows the facts, but yet she works for a medical records company that is not a healthcare worker. So stop, look around your community, look at the people that are infected, look at the people in the hospital in isolation that could die alone, look at the people who have recovered but have other complications to deal with now. Just stop, look, open your eyes, and see the dangers in reopening our schools now. True, kids do recover quicker than others, but the facts are the schools are filled with older kids and adults who will not recover as quickly. You, as a Board of Education member, are you willing to go inside a classroom and cover it all day while a teacher is out sick? Are you willing to leave your home to do this? You, as a Board of Education, are not even meeting in person yet, but you want to send others back to face-to-face setting, which makes no sense. So please, open your eyes and see the dangers and do the right thing to keep our schools closed. Ms. Musselwhite?
Thank you. Submission number 13, LaShonda Underwood. Good morning, members of the board. Today, as you all weigh in on the next few weeks and months of reopening the schools, I ask that you please keep the metrics in mind. Last year, you all voted to use, you all voted for us to return safely if we were at 7%. Currently, we're at 15.8%. If you vote to reopen school, does that mean that you will no longer meet virtually? Will all of you board members now reconvene in one room and not virtually? Ms. Van, Ms. Chisholm, Mr. Warfel, Mr. West, Ms. Williams, will each of you go out to visit each of the schools that you voted to reopen to volunteer where needed? Cumberland Strong, remember. COVID-19 is real. Many people continue to lose their lives daily. This is an airborne virus. We can't control it, but we can stay at home and be accountable for our safety and our family. Teachers are not in the building, but that does not mean that they are not teaching. Teachers are still working tirelessly, planning on how to make the next lesson better than the last. Each board meeting that I tune into, my anxiety and stress levels skyrocket. Please stick to the metrics that you agreed on the first part of the school year and make the right decision. Submission number 14, David Reed. I hope that each of you are well. Today, I am asking for you to reconsider keeping our schools closed and the students learning online for the rest of the school year. Please follow the lead of Durham Public Schools before it is too late and we suffer great losses. If you reopen our schools too soon, COVID is a virus that has different effects on different people. So there is still, there is still much to be learned. Our kids and teachers are not lab animals to be tested on, so you need to make the decision to keep everyone virtual. Submission number 15, Jessica Leggett. Good morning. I have written countless emails over the past six months with regard to services for EC students. I wanted to thank you for the consideration given to EC separate students and the re-entry plan adopted. These students thrive on consistency and have had everything, have had anything but that over the last 10 months. I am thrilled that they will be able to experience a consistent school environment for four of the five days when school returns to session. In-person learning and in-person therapies are vital to their success. I supported Dr. Conley's plan to allow for an incubation period after the holidays, and I'm hopeful that you will continue to support the return of students to school. Scientific evidence indicates that our schools are not the contagious environment some would make it out to be, and I'm eager to see them return to successful learning centers. Please continue your support of re-entry with the knowledge that it is an opportunity and not a mandate. Parents that vehemently oppose re-entry still have the option for virtual, but parents of students like my EC third grader who is begging for his teachers and in need of the classroom environment to thrive sincerely appreciate you allowing us the opportunity for our children to be successful. Thank you in advance for your consideration. Submission number 16, Jennifer Thorn. Will schools be reopening as planned following Plan B on January 25th, 2021, with some grades in person two days a week and virtual the rest of the week? If not, is it safe to say that until the COVID numbers outlined in the school board's metrics are met, no students will return to any form of in-person schooling for the foreseeable future to possibly include the rest of the 2020-2021 school year? Thank you. Ms. Horn?
Number 17, Debbie Reynolds. Good morning. I am asked for each of you to consider to keep our schools virtual for this semester. Please help keep everyone safe by keeping our kids online. Look, Durham School stepped up and did the right thing. Now it's your turn as a true leader in education. Do the right thing and stay closed so everyone can remain healthy. Number 18, Judy Coat. First and foremost, I want to say thank you to the school board for doing what you do. It's not easy having to make difficult decisions that you will receive some harsh backlash from individuals who don't agree. As a parent and educator myself, it has been extremely hard this pandemic. Teachers were forced to learn on the spot, to learn technology, to make lessons engaging. Students were forced to learn technology and to be able to learn virtually. Is this easy? Absolutely not. Is virtual for everyone? No, it's not. While yes, should we all have a choice to go to school or not? Yes, but right now, no. We are in a pandemic that hasn't changed, and I know for some, they are tired of hearing the word pandemic, but it's the truth. This is uncharted waters for us all. Numbers are high, and the biggest question is, so we just put people at risk because we have a terrible Facebook group called Cumberland County reopen schools safely? Or parents who don't care of the risk for all? Remember, while teachers are essential, we did not sign up for potentially putting our lives or the lives of others on the line in the event of a pandemic. We have options to still teach safely than it should be given. We are working tirelessly and even more than ever. The biggest thing we should all be doing is staying safe and making the best of what we can. Let's look at grading during virtual. Let's adjust it to help and not make our students fail. Let's not expect kids to have so much work to do when class is over. If our babies are getting on daily, they are one step ahead. These students have had a tough year, we all have, but we are in this together. The truth is, we will not be behind on academics this year, but that's okay. In the end, education can be made up. Lives cannot. We cannot continue to have such a negative outlook about virtual. We have to do things differently right now, but being so negative and harsh to others doesn't make things change. Have some grace and understanding. Remember that at least virtual learning, the kids are getting something. Please also consider if we move to Plan B, the same people that are now saying, allow people choice, well, you are now taking the choice away from kids who want to remain virtual because we are now taking the buses from them who rely on that hotspot to log on daily. Remember, everything has a domino effect. Please consider safety first because in an environment where there is fear, how can anyone effectively teach and learn when the worry is trying to not catch COVID because we are being forced back into a building when numbers are at an all-time high? I beg you. Okay, that's our three minutes there. Our next submission comes from Harold Moore. I know each of you have your own personal feelings, and some are even being bullied by parents to open the schools, but I ask that you stand tall and true to your oath to protect our students and do what's best for everyone. That will be keeping our schools closed until the virus is better, under control. Don't put people's lives in danger just to reopen the schools because of pressure. And Ms. Musgrave, you keep up the good work. I saw an ugly message someone posted online that you are not fit to be a board member, and they are going to run after your seat next election. You stay strong and do your thing. You get all the support of the parents who truly care for the kids' safety. Some of you board members need to stop and look in the mirror and remember why you took the position. Was it just for the paycheck? Because some of you are acting that way. Keep our schools closed, please. Our next submission is from Sharman Thompson. I believe that CCS needs to remain virtual for the rest of the year. The metrics should be between 7 and 14%, and CCS is at least 15%. Going back to face-to-face puts students and teachers at risk. What about teachers who get COVID and possibly take it back to their families? It's safer for everyone to be at home, especially with the numbers steadily rising. Everyone's safety is a priority, and going back in the classroom is a risk I'm not willing to take. Ms. Musselwhite?
Submission number 21, Megan Kramer. Dear Board of Education, the longer the COVID-19 epidemic continues, the more opportunities scientists and doctors have opportunities to study how the virus spreads and how to treat it. At first, the science indicated schools should be closed, but now further research is showing that schools can safely reopen. Further, scientists are even recommending reopening because of the essential function schools play in our society. To quote Brown University, we can now recommend that schools be open even at the very high levels of spread we are now seeing, provided that they strictly implement strategies of infection control. Evidence supports the view that student, staff, and educator risk can all be brought to acceptable minimal levels with robust infection control practices when implemented in a collaborative and transparent way among all stakeholders, including educators and other school personnel, administrators, district leaders, families, and students. And the submission has a source. The president and the American Academy of Pediatrics, Lee Beers MC, also stated that new information tells us that opening schools does not significantly increase community transmission of the virus. However, it is critical for schools to closely follow guidance provided by public health officials. Another source is within the submission. CCS has already presented a plan that includes robust infection control practices. Please allow that plan to be put into use starting January 25th. Our schools can and should safely reopen.
Ms. Musselwhite, excuse me, but we have, right at this moment, have reached our 30 minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you to Pete and Ms. Musselwhite. We appreciate you doing that task. The chair will call for adoption of the agenda, 5.01.
Ms. Chisholm, I move to adopt the agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second that we adopt the agenda. Pete, will you record the vote?
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Chisholm. Ms. Chisholm?
Yes.
Mr. West?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. McKeller?
Yes.
Ms. Musgrave?
Yes.
Ms. Sutton?
Yes.
Ms. Van?
Yes.
Mr. Warfel?
Yes.
And Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Chisholm, that was unanimous.
Thank you. The chair will now call for a motion to accept the consent agenda.
I move to accept the consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second that we accept the consent agenda. Pete, will you please record the vote?
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Chisholm?
Yes.
Mr. West?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. McKeller?
Yes.
Ms. Musgrave?
Yes.
Ms. Sutton? Ms. Sutton? Thank you. Ms. Van?
Yes.
Mr. Warfel?
Yes.
And Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Chisholm, that was unanimous.
Thank you. We now move to number seven, discussion agenda. Mr. McKeller, do you have anything to add?
No, we did meet, but everything is on the consent agenda. However, there is one pending item, and that is we are, I guess, at our next committee meeting to be provided with information as to the repairs of the large skylights at Gray Street High School and Jack Gritt High School.
Thank you, Mr. McKeller. We move to number eight. Ms. Williams, Student Support Services Committee report.
We did not meet.
Act 9, Budget and Finance Committee Report. Mr. West?
Thank you, Ms. Chisholm. We did meet, and we approved some budget amendments and a contract for the low bidder for some Lenovo All-in-One Desktop Computers. Remember, we pushed the annual audit presentation pending some loose ends, then they didn't tie up, and they've got that worked out. And Clyde, I'll turn it over to you for a receive item 9.01, our annual audit presentation.
Thank you, Mr. West. Good morning, board members. Our auditors with Cherry Becker are prepared to present our audit report. Mr. Coleman, if you could check, they were waiting to be admitted into the meeting. If you can check and allow them in, and they'll be prepared to give you that report. We do have a copy of their presentation attached to the agenda. So if we can take just a minute to allow them in, and then they'll be ready to present.
Okay. I think Ms. April Adams had indicated that she had gotten in, and I see Ms. Linda Suggs is with us also. So I would like to introduce Ms. April Adams, partner with the accounting firm of Cherry Becker, Ms. Linda Suggs, who is the senior manager with Cherry Becker. They are performing our annual audit for the school district this year. Board members, you will remember for the past several years, Mr. Eddie Burke had been our partner with Cherry Becker. Mr. Burke is retiring, and as part of that transition, Ms. Adams is the new partner in charge of the Cumberland County Schools audit. I can't remember if Eddie was retiring prior to this time or in the middle of this year. I can't remember that time period, but it was coming shortly as we met and discussed. April? Very good. I'll turn this over to Ms. April Adams and Ms. Linda Suggs.
All right, great. And you're going to share the presentation?
Yes, Mr. Coleman will share the presentation for you now.
Well, good morning. I am happy to be here to deliver the results of the June 30, 2020 audit, and we're going to go to the next slide. And we're going to go to the next slide. All right, so this morning, what I'd like to cover with you is just briefly remind you what the role of the external auditor is. Then I'd like to just, at a very high level, talk about what we did when we looked at internal controls for you, what we deemed to be the significant audit areas, and tell you how we tested, what our testing approach was for those areas at a very high level. Then I'd like to identify what the single audit major programs were. This is the federal and state grant dollars that the school board administers. Which ones were identified as major programs for compliance? Then I'd like to go over the results of the audit, what everyone's really interested in. And then a quick summary of what you should take away from the presentation, and then I'll be glad to answer any questions or take any comments. All right, let's move to the next slide, please. Thank you. All right, so the role of the external auditor. We perform audit in accordance with two sets of auditing standards. The first set is just the generally accepted auditing standards of the United States. So any audit of any type of entity that gets done is performed under that first set of auditing standards. And then we add the second set of auditing standards to, because they're the government auditing standards as you are a government entity. Both of those auditors require that we plan and perform, go back, the procedures to obtain reasonable assurance that your financial statements are free from material misstatement. And basically, what that means is that we perform a risk-based audit where we assess your financial statements to where we think that they're most susceptible to being materially misstated, and then we focus our procedures in on those areas. Once we've performed all our procedures, we are required to express an opinion. And because we do two sets of auditing standards, we issue two separate opinions related to that, and then we issue two more opinions related to the federal and state dollars for single audit that we test for compliance. So there's four total opinions in your financial statements. And then after all of that, the audit centers still require us to communicate additional matters to you, and we do that in two ways. One is the presentation today, as well as a letter that will accompany your financial statements. And the types of things that we're required to communicate to you is if there were significant changes in your accounting policies, we would identify that in the letter and in this presentation. It identifies what the significant estimates are in your financial statements because those are based on what management knows at the time of the financial statements. But, you know, and they could change as they play out in the future. If you think of things like your pension for your retirement plan for your employees, as well as the health benefits, those are the two biggest estimates. And as you can imagine, they're just estimates of what those costs would be in the future. And then finally, if any journal entries are identified as a result of the audit, in that letter as well. All right, let's move to the next slide, please. All right, so internal controls. While we don't actually opine on the internal controls over the school board's initials, we are required to do a certain number of procedures and review and report on any deficiencies noted in that review. And so what we do is we identify what the significant transaction cycles are for the school board. If you think about how do things get, how does the revenue get recorded? How does the expenses get paid? And how does payroll get paid? Those are your significant transaction cycles, as well as how does the information come out of your financial system and actually get reported? We call that your financial reporting enclosed. It's another significant transaction cycle. What we are required to do related to that is get an understanding. We get all the policies and procedures related to all those transaction cycles and obtain an understanding of them, as well as walk through one test of a transaction. From there, we decide if we actually want to test controls. And we do test controls over the school board for payroll, as well as cash disbursements. And we do that as a part of our testing related to those single audit, the major programs that I'll identify later. Also related to internal controls, we have to do some certain procedures related to journal entries. So we obtain what we call a data dump of the journal entries, which is just basically every journal entry that happened throughout the year that was recorded in the system. And then we mine it using a system looking for unusual transactions. We'll pull those unusual transactions, and we'll ask for the supporting documentation and just review the journal entry to make sure that it's got the supporting documentation that supports it, as well as does, you know, the entry itself make sense and does it make business sense and is it properly approved? And then finally, related to internal controls, we are required to take a look at the general computer controls over your information technology related to the financial system. And so we're looking for, you know, are passwords required? Is the user access restricted to those that actually need access to the system? Is it physically secure, et cetera? All right, let's move to the next slide. So significant audit areas. As I mentioned, we do perform what we call a risk-based audit. So we're looking for where your financial statements are most material to those material misstatements. And then we focus in and perform procedures over those areas to ensure that they are fairly stated. I've identified what those areas are. The types of tests that we're doing over those areas is that we're either confirming it with a third party. We're testing it analytically, you know, if we can predict what we think the balance should be based on third-party data. And then if we absolutely have to, we'll do a test of details where we're actually pulling a sample of transactions and looking at all the supporting documentation for those. All right, let's move to the next slide. So as you know, the school board receives a substantial amount of federal and state dollars, and we are required to perform what we call a single audit over those programs. And we do a determination of which ones each year need to be tested for coverage. And so the first, these are the three programs that we had to test in the current year. Title I for federal programming. And then for the state funds was the state public school fund. And I'm sorry, the COVID was actually also federal dollars as well. So that's your CARES Act money that the school board received in the current year. So those are the ones we tested for administration and tested in compliance with the compliance requirements applicable to each one of those programs, which is a substantial amount of our testing. Okay. Let's move on to the next slide. So the results of the audit, what everyone's most interested here. We are substantially complete with the procedures. We are fine-tuning the rest of the detail and completing the reviews. But I am able to tell you that we have all intentions of issuing unmodified opinions for all four of the opinions that we will be providing. That's the opinion that you want. Also known as a clean opinion. It is the highest level of assurance that we can give you as an audit firm that those financial statements are free from all those material misstatements we were looking for, and that you are administering all those federal and state dollars in compliance with the compliance requirements. All right, and then the required communications. Again, this is the letter that will accompany your financial statements. I'll spare you the reading and give you the highlights here. There were no changes in accounting policies in the current year. Your significant estimates haven't changed from the prior year as to what the estimates are, the numbers have. But you've got your allowance for doubtful accounts related to your accounts receivable. That's an estimate. Your depreciable lives on your capital assets. You may actually use them for longer or shorter than what you've estimated the useful life to be. And then you've got your incurred but not reported related to your self-insurance. And the amount of accrued vacation for your employees is an estimate, as well as the pension and the other post-employment benefits, which is the health insurance for your retirees. Those are all estimates in your financial statements. And then finally, for journal entries, I'm happy to report that no journal entries were identified as a result of our procedures, which does mean that all the policies and procedures in place are helping the school board properly capture and report all of the activity, financial activity that occurred throughout the year. So that's a clean report, as clean as you can get from an audit perspective. All right, let's move to the next slide. So in summary, you received clean opinions. There's no journal entries. There's good internal controls in place, which means that no significant deficiencies were identified as a result of the audit. And we did receive full cooperation from management. You can imagine doing an audit in 2020 was just like everything else you've done in 2020. It's been difficult because we did everything virtually where we've typically had, you know, gone on site and looked at records in person. So we just wanted to mention that we appreciate Clyde and his whole team cooperating with us on that note, to get us everything we need to get the audit completed. And that concludes my presentation. So I'll be glad to take any questions or comments.
This is Greg. Ms. Adams and Ms. Suggs, thank you very much for your hard work and your teams working at Cherry Becker. And Clyde, I do owe to you and your staff for getting it done and getting a clean report in 2020. But Ms. Chisholm, that's my report, but I'll certainly defer to you for any questions the board may have for the examiners. Ms. McKeller, go ahead.
Ms. McKeller, I was getting there. Okay.
Ms. Adams, thanks for your presentation. My question is, I know that as an auditor, you work within some realm of standards. What is your audit program? What standards are they based upon?
It's the generally accepted accounting standards and the government auditing standards.
Okay. And your final result, is there a hierarchical position that companies can take when you do their audits? I mean, do they get satisfactory, excellent, outstanding? Or it doesn't work that way?
It's called an unmodified, which means that it's also known as a clean opinion, but you guys got the highest level of opinion that you can get. You got the best results. Is that what you're asking?
Yes. Okay, so, and this audit would carry us for what next period of time?
The next one, the next audit will be at June 30, 2021.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any more questions? Thank you very much. We appreciate you working with your firm. We've been with you for quite some time. The chair will entertain a motion to receive this annual audit presentation.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we receive the audit presentation 9.01.
I second that motion.
Mr. Sorkin, can I ask a quick question before we get too far into this? Since this is a receive item, do we need to take a vote on this?
Oh, yeah, that's what we do.
It's not absolutely required. Ms. Horn and board members, there is certainly no harm in it, and it's certainly customary for many boards to entertain the motion that's on the floor now.
Any other questions? If not, Pete, will you please call for and record the vote?
Yes, ma'am. And may I ask, I know that Ms. Sutton made the motion, but I did not record who seconded the motion. I'm sorry. Mr. McKeller? Okay, thank you. Okay, Ms. Chisholm?
Yes.
Mr. West?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. McKeller? Mr. McKeller?
Yes.
Ms. Musgrave?
Yes.
Ms. Sutton?
Yes.
Ms. Van?
Yes.
Mr. Warfel?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Chisholm, that was unanimous.
Thank you very much. We move to 10. Files the committee report. Ms. Jones, do you have anything for us today?
Madam Chair, there are no new items. All were on the consent agenda. What was discussed was the revision of policy 5020, visitors to schools, policy 5030, community use of facilities, and policy 7510, leave. That's all I have, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Jones, very much. Number 11, Curriculum Committee Report. Ms. Van, do you have anything else for us?
We have no new items. All were on the consent agenda, and we approved the resolution for Support My Future NC attainment goal.
Thank you very much. Mr. Warfel, do you have anything for the legislative committee?
The legislative committee did not meet and don't have any items.
Thank you. Is there any additional business that need to claim my attention? There's none listed on the agenda.
Well, it's in the view of personnel, but we met and everything was on the consent item.
Oh, I sure did. Thank you, Ms. Sutton. Personnel committee, yes. No, I got everybody, yes. We listened to 5.01, Board Members' Updates. It's limited comments regarding school system business and school system events only. Is anyone who'd like to speak at this time? I don't see anyone's hands. So I guess we don't have anything today, Pete. Now we'll move over to 1502. Mr. West and I, along with all board members, continue to thank our tremendous premier professionals, supportive families, and committed community. In these uncertain times, your support is invaluable and appreciated as well as we make difficult decisions to ensure quality learning and safety for all Cumberland County Schools students and staff members. Our schools and central offices will be closed on January 18th in observance of the Martin Luther King Junior Holiday. We appreciate your attendance at today's virtual meeting. Our next regular board meeting will be held February 9, 2021. We look forward to being with you again in February. This meeting is now adjourned.